Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adoption of Agenda for Regular Meeting. Under provisions of the Public Committee Law of the State of Missouri, the Board must adopt by roll call vote an agenda that includes time, date, place, and tentative agenda for the meeting. A copy of the notice and agenda for this meeting was posted on Tuesday, April 10th, 2018, at the Administration Center, 1005 Waterford Drive, Floristville, Missouri. At the same time, copy of the notice and agenda were mailed to major radio and television stations, to three newspapers, to all municipalities, schools in the district, and posted on the district website.
I make a motion to amend the agenda to return to closed session after I have completed.
Motion is made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Um, we don't need to call for a vote on that one, so.
So then I move that we accept the agenda as amended.
Sorry. Second. Call for the vote?
Mr. Eber.
Aye.
Mr. Sponder.
Aye.
Talk to it.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Secretary votes aye. Dr. Graves.
Aye.
Mr. Schwell.
Aye.
Good evening. We will now have Dr. Bland and Dr. Betts come up to talk about our district's Salute our Scholar Bowl check-in.
Good evening, Board of Education. On Saturday, March 10th, it was an intense day of competition at the annual Ferguson-Floreson School District Scholar Bowl. Students displayed great teamwork, challenged their cognitive skills, demonstrated excellent sportsmanship, and were proud to be smart and proud of their schools. In the team competition, Griffith earned sportsmanship. Did Griffith come up? And their students and parents. I thought I saw them. Congratulations, and this is Mr. Shawn Joyce, Principal of Griffith Elementary School. And in fourth place, we have Lee Hamilton Elementary School. So Lee Hamilton, come on up. And in third place, we have Cones Elementary School. Do we have Cones? Is he here yet? Alright. And in second place, we had House Ferry Elementary School. And the All-Over Team Champions, drum roll, you have to do that for the College Scholar Bowl. Alright, is Robinwood Elementary School. And we have Dr. Ice, Principal. Dr. Ice, would you like to share who we have up there today? Well, I'll just announce them all. So we have from Robinwood, Liliana Childs, Jocelyn Chambers. There's Jocelyn. Colby Sarala. Jayla Kirkman. And there's Jayla, another scholar. Emily Vaughn. Yell Phillips. And their awesome coach, fifth grade teacher Natalie Jaeger. So congratulations to Robinwood.
We also have their parents in the audience.
Parents.
They need to come up and get in the picture.
Come on up, parents. Let's give our parents another round of applause. And now we have our Individual Judge Champion, which is Gia Willis from Lee Hamilton Elementary School. So come on up, Dr. Loyette. You can stand in Jill's place. And Jill competed against nine other students to emerge victoriously in the individual competition.
She was our secret eagle last month to speak. She got really shy, but it was right for her. She's our first student secret eagle. Dr. Davis has been a secret eagle. Courtney's nephew has been a secret eagle, so it was neat having our first student on.
So congratulations to our Scholar Bowl champions. And in Dr. Davis's words that morning, "It's cool to be smart in Ferguson-Floreson." Yeah.
So next we will have Dr. Bland talk about who our student could be the Missouri Scholar 100 Honorable Mention.
Alright, so each year, the Missouri Association of Secondary School Principals sponsor the Missouri Scholars 100 Program. Students are selected based on a formula using grade point average and ACT or SAT scores, class rank, and seven other factors including citizenship, activity, and attendance. I'm going to have us now recognize McClure North Senior Michael Cameron for being selected as an Honorable Mention Student in the 2018 Missouri Scholars 100. So congratulations to Michael. And thank you, Dr. Crowley, for joining us.
Dr. Bland, now we'll talk about Cross Keys receiving the National Project Lead the Way recognition.
Mr. Brown, our PLTW teacher, would please come up? Cross Keys Middle School has been recognized as a Project Lead the Way Distinguished School for providing broad access to transformative learning opportunities for students through PLTW Gateway. It is one of just 110 middle schools nationwide to receive this honor. PLTW is a nonprofit organization that serves millions of K through 12 students and teachers in over 10,500 schools across the U.S. The PLTW Distinguished School Recognition honors schools committed to increasing student success, student access, I'm sorry, engagement and achievement in their PLTW programs. To be eligible for the designation and distinction, Cross Keys Middle School had to meet the following criteria: Over at least one PLTW Gateway Unit at each grade level; Have more than 50% of the student body participating during the 2016-17 school year; Have 25% of students advancing to high school to participate in two or more units. So Cross Keys has met all of the criteria, and they are being recognized as a PLTW Distinguished School. Congratulations, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Dr. Bland. Now we will have Dr. Boyd to talk about our district's Support Staff of the Year.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
The Board of Education is pleased to recognize Priscilla Urban, Secretary to the Directors of Food Services, our 2017-2018 Support Staff Employee of the Year. Priscilla Urban has been with the district over 18 years and goes above and beyond her job description on a daily basis. Priscilla devotes her personal time to the district and frequently works on weekends to complete additional tasks. Priscilla is key to ensuring district food service staff understands and executes operations according to state requirements and helps successfully negotiate our desi habit. She's the definition of an exceptional team member because her primary focus is ensuring our kitchen teams are supported and students are receiving the nutritious meals they deserve. Thank you, Priscilla Urban, for your service and congratulations on being selected the FMSD Support Staff Employee of the Year.
We will now have Ms. Davenport talk about Lee Hamilton's educator and McClure alum selected as District Teacher of the Year.
So I'm very excited to have this honor tonight to be able to announce. Lee Hamilton Elementary School First Grade Teacher Lindsay Williams has been selected as the Ferguson-Floreson School District 2018 Teacher of the Year. Mrs. Williams is a proud product of the Ferguson-Floreson School District. She attended Ferguson-Floreson Elementary, Middle Schools, and High School and graduated from McClure High School. She has been employed with the district for 11 years. Ms. Williams spends time during the summer with these beautiful little babies up here and making home visits, introducing herself to her new students and their families in a comfortable and relaxed environment. Ms. Williams has high expectations for each of her students. She spends the beginning of the year establishing her classroom climate and culture that immediately encourage her students to be dedicated scholars in their quest for learning, and I see that every time I'm in her classroom. I'm just gonna tear up, I'm sorry Lindsay, but you're amazing. So her mission as an educator is to deliver the highest quality educational experiences with unconditional love through advanced rigor, engaging teaching methods, and a passion for climate and culture. Lindsay has said that the rewards she finds in teaching are endless. Though at the end of every day, she may be exhausted both physically and mentally, it is great to have that feeling that she knows that she has a purpose, and she certainly does. So I give you the Selected Teacher of the Year for 2018 in Ferguson-Floreson. Congratulations to Lindsay.
Now, with Dr. Betts, District Administrator receives NASEPA State Leadership Award.
And we would like to take a moment to recognize our Individual Judge Champion, Gia Willis. She is here from Lee Hamilton.
She wasn't even walking in that door any second now.
Director of Federal Programs, Dr. Joyce Lynn Q. Walker, was recognized nationally at the March Meeting of the National Association of Federal Education Program Administrators in Washington, DC. Dr. Q. Walker was selected as the NASEPA State Leadership Award Recipient in Missouri. Dr. Q. Walker's knowledge of federal programs is invaluable to the district as she seeks to serve the students of our community. Congratulations, Dr. Walker, Dr. Joyce Lynn Q. Walker.
So each month, the Communication Team presents a short video of district highlights and successes.
All across the Ferguson-Floreson School District, students are experiencing success. Seniors at McClure South Berkeley High School had the chance to attend a Bowing Pre-Employment Training Meeting. This meeting is held yearly at MSB. It is also part of the St. Louis Community College Center for Workforce Innovation Partnership. Students are eligible to apply and become part of the High School Students for Bowing Training Program. The program is free, and it includes 208 hours of instruction in aircraft assembly mechanic techniques. Upon acceptance and completion of the program, those hired would start as assembly mechanics earning $15 an hour, with a 50 cent increase every six months, capping at $28 an hour. After one year of employment, Bowing will pay for the student's education up to $15,000 per year toward an approved bachelor's degree and $25,000 per year toward a master's degree. On March 20th, McClure High School's foreign language instructor Barb Smith took French students Samonte Jennings, Bria Caldwell, Kalia Booker, Jaya Thomas Felix, Alfonso Martin, Johnny Shannon, and Marissa Hunter to France for their travel immersion experience. They spent a little time in Paris before heading to their host families on March 22nd. During this time, they went to school with their host brothers and sisters and participated in other host family activities. The students also spent time touring France and learning about the French culture. For this next story, prepare to be amazed.
Going down on the table, would you count from the left?
Oh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13.
How many cards did she count?
13.
13. Well, first put it in the envelope. Now you can sit down. Did you feel it? He's putting them into your envelope. I asked him to speak. Put the shirt on and do the first thing in there.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16.
Vocal music teacher Robert Gilwin received a $2,000 gift from Abracadabra, an organization that focuses on teaching magic to students using steam-centric techniques while developing presentation skills. The gift has never been presented to a school outside of St. Louis City. It was awarded as part of a fundraising campaign by the organization. The funds have been used to provide an after-school program for students to practice and perform magic. On April 3rd, students displayed their magic tricks with teachers, staff, and parents. McClure High School Junior Santia Mederios created a self-portrait that made the jury exhibition at Southern Illinois University Edwardsville's Annual High School Art Exhibition. Only 64% of student entries made it through the jury selection process. Congratulations to the McClure South Berkeley High School Robotics Team on their 17th place finish out of 49 teams at the Missouri State Robotics Competition. Throughout the course of the school year, the students learned about teamwork, perseverance, and hard work. The regional competition took place last month at the Shayside Arena on the campus of St. Louis University. This year's finish is a great improvement from the finishing of 48th place last season for the MSB Robotics Team. The students received a warm welcome back at school when they displayed their specially-designed robot during lunch periods so other students and staff could see their work. This is just one of the many ways that our scholars are exposed to steam-enhanced curriculum. You can learn more about these stories and other examples of the great learning happening in our district on our website and on social media.
Alright, this portion of the meeting is allocated to show a short video for the Missouri School Board Association to provide a report of current activities and events that may be of interest to board members and to the community.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report for the month of April. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during a few minutes of your board meeting. We begin with a look at the issue of school employees who become sexual predators. MSBA Center for Education Safety has developed a presentation designed to help school leaders keep students safe from sexual predators. Part of that presentation includes video interviews with former Missouri teachers convicted of sex crimes involving students. Safety Specialist with the Center for Education Safety, Gary Moore, conducted those interviews where former school employees shared how they chose and groomed their victims.
They had a student that they thought was having some problems at home, and they wanted to be a counselor to the student. And they were counseling the students. From there, they were flirting as they got comfortable with the student.
Moore adds that while the vast majority of teachers would never be involved in such criminal behavior with students, school districts must be prepared to deal with inappropriate relationships when they occur.
It doesn't matter if you're in a metropolitan area or if you're in a small rural area, it can't happen. There's three categories: If it has happened, it is happening, or it's going to happen in your school district. You can't afford to put the blinders on thinking, "We're small, we're a tight family, this will never happen here."
Moore's presentation is called Crossing the Line: When Educators Become Predators and was part of a recent series of regional meetings sponsored by the Center for Education Safety. School districts in Missouri will soon be able to get federal and state reimbursement for behavioral health services provided to any Medicaid-eligible students. This is good news for Missouri schools who have reported for some time that one of the biggest barriers to school achievement is unmet behavioral health needs of students. In response to this need, MSBA has advocated for a new state policy that will increase both access to services and funding for those services. Dr. Kim Ratcliffe oversees MSBA's Medicaid Consortium.
And now it's kind of a game changer, so we're really excited about that. But we want for the schools, as well as parents and community providers, to understand how this can work and to really put a plan out there for how we can collaborate differently than we've done in the past and how we can give children a brighter future through mental health services that can be provided within the context of schools now.
MSBA's Behavioral Health Work Group includes representatives from school districts, administration, state agencies and associations, managed care companies, university professors, community mental health providers, school nurses, and counselors, and others. MSBA was instrumental in advocating for the new policy, allowing community providers to bill Medicaid when delivering services in schools or for schools to do so, and when all conditions of the policy have been met. If you've just been elected to your local Board of Education for the first time, congratulations and welcome to school board service. One of the first things you'll want to do is complete the 16 hours of training required by state law and provided by MSBA. Half of the 16 hours can be completed online, with the other half provided at various locations in the state throughout the year. Visit the MSBA website for a complete schedule of training opportunities. There is no cost to participate in the required training. Also, mark your calendar for the annual MSBA Leadership Summit to be held June 2nd and 3rd at the Lake of the Ozarks. Registration information for that event is posted on the MSBA website. Be sure your board is represented at the Spring Delegate Assembly to be held in conjunction with the Leadership Summit. And the annual Safe Schools Conference will immediately follow the Leadership Summit this year. That conference will be held June 4th and 5th at the Lake of the Ozarks. It features a variety of workshops and speakers on school safety issues and is designed for board members, administrators, school resource officers, law enforcement officials, and others that have a role to play in keeping our students safe at school. Registration information for that event also is available through the MSBA website. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and so long from Columbia.
This portion of the meeting is allocated for the Board to provide an update of current activities and events in the district that may be of special interest to board members and to the community. So first up will be Mr. Eber.
Hello, everyone. Okay, I'll read my portion of the strategic plan update. These last few months of school, the district is pleased to provide some wellness opportunities for our employees that are funded through our insurance fund. Information was shared this week with staff regarding an opportunity to sign up for wellness screening, and that will be held at each school throughout the month of May. Representatives from the- Representatives from the Quest Diagnostic will be conducting screening for A1C, blood pressure, BMI, and cholesterol testing. All employees are eligible to participate in the screenings, and as a bonus, a ten-dollar gift card to Subway will be given to all employees who participate in the screenings. Let's hope they help. Kelly Bristow, our wellness consultant, has created a Facebook page to promote wellness initiatives and activities. Please like our page, Ferguson Floor Wellness, and follow it to find creative ideas to stay healthy. Is Kelly here? No? Okay. She's pretty healthy. Would you agree? In celebration of National Move More Month, United Healthcare has a Move More kickoff for National Walking Day with students at Ferguson Middle last week. All students were given pedometers, and UHC donated a treadmill for the staff to use in order to keep moving. Another healthy news, Patty, our SFE dietitian, is hosting Rainbow Days at various elementary schools throughout the district. Students are providing a, provided a rainbow of fruit and vegetables to sample. Our Healthy Schools/Healthy Community Grant Wellness Champion attended the Shape America Conference in Nashville, Tennessee over spring break. They brought back some initiative, innovative ideas to use with our students to promote a more active lifestyle. Wow, that was a lot. We're gonna get healthy. Just on another note, I guess, you know, I just came off an election, and thank God, because man, if anybody ran for something that is just catching up on my sleep now, I want to thank all the voters who came. And I might have said this once before, but it's worth repeating, unless you've done it, you have no idea the work behind it. So I encourage everyone who is going to vote, when somebody's standing there handing you something, just take it, it makes them feel better, okay? You can go right inside and throw it out, but, you know, gosh. So I want to thank everybody with that. Also, on the campaign trail, I did have an opportunity to speak with a lot of bus drivers, and I wanted to mention this to you, this is no big deal, but I'd like the district, if they could, to look into, they were kind of all, kind of say that we don't provide healthcare and other districts do. So I don't, I didn't know that. So I, you know, didn't know if you guys could look at some sort of cost analysis on that. I told them I'd bring it up to you. That was, that was one thing that I was kind of surprised at, because we're usually pretty competitive, I mean. And I guess the other thing is the restructuring meetings we're having. We had one Monday. So I encourage everyone to come out to those. We're kind of in the infancy stage of that, but it will be happening, and your input is greatly appreciated and will be listened to by this board. I know where I work at AT&amp;T, you do thousands of surveys, and it kind of wears you down, but this is really, really important stuff. And we will be, the administration team and the board will be looking at everything that is sent through. So we want your input, because we represent the public. That's really our main job up here, is just a representative of all the voters out there and the taxpayers. So with that said, hope to see you all Monday at McClure South Berkeley.
Good evening. I do not have a talent management update for this month, so that's all for me. Thank you.
Good evening. I am on the operations and maintenance, and the district school assessment, the lowest and most responsible bid went to MGT of America and was approved by the board last month. They will access all buildings, including grounds, as well as educational suitability, technology readiness, suitability, enrollment capacity. They will also look at our education programs and will attend and or participate in the community meetings and other meetings as needed. So we'll have more meetings besides the restructuring meetings. Also, at eighty-eight fifty-five Dunn Road, it will have its final occupancy inspection next week. We also have a bid of sixty-two thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars for break landscaping and lawn care this year. And if they, if we don't need all the cuttings, if it's a hot summer and the grass doesn't grow, we will not be charged that much for the next year. I would also like to take this opportunity to congratulate Courtney and Scott and welcome them back to the board, and glad they're with us. And I would also like to thank Rob for being president and that he did a great job this year, and I would like to thank Courtney and Donna for their help in leadership in guiding us and working with Rob, and our dear little assistant secretary. So thank you all very much.
Good evening, everybody. The district is actively working to build community and gain stakeholders in a variety of meaningful ways. Just as Captain Wood Scott said, we had a great crowd at our reconstructing town hall on Monday evening at McClure, and we have the town halls planned for Monday, April sixteenth at six-thirty at the McClure South Berkeley Auditorium, and April twenty-third at six-thirty at the McClure North Upper advisement area. And you can find information, including links to videos of the meetings, at our furgfloor.org/straw. Also, questions answered that were submitted and were not answered, they're being uploaded on that website. Students, parents, and staff have received messages today asking for the response regarding a school start time survey, and a link to the survey also can be found on our district website. On Friday, April sixth, students from across St. Louis participated in the Special Olympics at McClure North. The elementary schools represented were Hanrahan, Lee Hamilton, Lucas Crossing, Meadows, Parker Road, Robinwood, Walnut Grove, Wedgwood, and Woodland. Students, athletes had the opportunity to participate in running, rowing, and jumping events. The district had a total of four hundred and seventy-three students participating in this great event, including volunteers from McClure North and Cross Keys Middle School. First graders at Bermuda were in a real treat yesterday when they were visited by meteorologist Chester Lampkin from KSDK News Channel Five. They had a fun afternoon learning about the weather and what it takes to be a meteorologist, and it was a great opportunity for students to see someone who looked like them working in a STEAM career. Tomorrow evening at six PM, students of the STEAM Academy will hold a project-based learning, or PPL Expedition Night. All are welcome to see the public display of student work. And are there any Berkeley Middle students or teachers here or principals? Okay, well, I want to say congratulations to the over hundred students at Berkeley Middle that earned a third-quarter celebration by having a three-point-oh-plus GPA, ninety percent attendance, and no referrals. Way to go, Berkeley Middle. And on April seventeenth, from five-thirty to seven-thirty, Airport Elementary is holding their first-ever STEAM night. Airport students and their families will have the chance to participate in science experiments, computing, coding, game design, math, programs, and more. This Saturday, April fourteenth, Little Creek will have an event from nine to eleven, parents and teachers. They also will have an annual Earth Day celebration in one week from Saturday, which is April twenty-first, and our big STEAM expo will be on May tenth at McClure South Berkeley, and more details will be coming on the district website, so you can go on that website and find out about the events. Both of these events are part of the Year of STEAM festivities that will culminate with Little Creek's fiftieth anniversary celebration this fall. Ferguson Middle School will host a Career Day on Thursday, May twelve. Various professionals in the community will participate in the fair, providing the students with insight on their respective careers. Recently, new requirements were enacted regarding Americans with Disabilities Act, or ADA, compliance for public websites. Prior to the taking effect, the communication and marketing team began reviewing our website to ensure that our website is compliant and accessible to all. The team will continue this process to enhance communication with all stakeholders. The district website is the location to find information, including links to resources, including, we have the parent portal on there, menus, directors, there's so much information on there. So, parents, we encourage you and students to go on that furgfloor.org website. And these are just some of the things of building connections with stakeholders and the benefits for all of our students. Thank you.
Good evening, evening, everyone. On April fourth, the Ferguson-Farson School Board, District, I'm sorry, not School Board, but the district PELP team met with St. Louis Public Schools and San Antonio Public Schools to team-share their continued work for Harvard. The first-year work at Harvard centered around building strong relationships with staff and students. The second-year work at Harvard centered around building a strong culture of school decorum. For much, after much intense professional development over the last two years, the district is starting to see the data move in the right direction to increase instruction, instructional time for our students. In the team-sharing session on April fourth, the district was asked to focus on one dilemma or challenge we're facing with the implementation of this work. The Ferguson-Farson School District chose to share the introduction of two PBIS strategies. Number one is behavior-specific praise and pre-corrects. After reviewing the data that was collected during our formal walkthroughs, we discovered that low teacher implementation of these practices across the district at the secondary level needed more attention and oversight to be a success. The partner districts and the team-share provided great feedback and strategies for us to implement during the third year of implementation for our decorum goal. We look forward to the work of changing mindsets about our students and our students' expectations and behaviors. I'm having a hard time getting that out today. And also, with the PELP teams, just acknowledge yourselves who are in the room, who are part of the Harvard team. Oh, me too. Okay. Yeah, I just missed the last meeting. But I want to thank you for the work that you're doing to help us, to help our students and to improve decorum in the school district. As a matter of fact... Okay, let's try this again. Just want to share just some summary information about student decorum in our district. Referrals are down twenty percent so far this year compared to this time last year. Headed in the right direction. Our school suspensions are down about twenty percent so far this year compared to last year. This has, now, this is significant. This has resulted in one thousand eleven more days of classroom instruction. One thousand and eleven more days of classroom instruction. But we can do better. Referral consequences: High school accounts for about fifty percent of our referrals, middle school accounts for about twenty-five percent, and elementary schools account for about twenty-two percent of our referrals. Very good. Good data, headed in the right direction, and next year it'll be forty percent, right, Gary? Okay. Okay. Also, we have a new program that I think this is our first year with my brother's keeper mentoring program. It's a Sarah Mountain, that's going to be held at the STEAM school on April twenty-fourth at six-thirty. This will mark the major national mentor initiative in the Ferguson-Farson School District, and I think Dr. Davis may talk a little bit more about that. Okay, thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. I just would like to say thank you so much for all the voters out there, and I am very, 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 very excited to be back on the board, and just for all the support and all the help. Students at McClure South Berkeley started a book club to help MSB reach their goal towards the District Two Billion Word Challenge. So far, the nineteen students in the book club have read two hundred and thirty books for the year. Cross Keys Middle School received a stages grant that will help them to develop a theater performing arts program. Stages Theater was chosen as one of the two theater companies nationally to launch the Educational Theater Association's Jump Start Theater Program in the local areas. The program is designed to help middle schools who do not have a theater performing arts program to develop one. Students at McClure North High School were celebrated and recognized also for their hard work and attendance during the Star Pride Annual Luncheon. The luncheon is an annual celebration of McClure North students who have demonstrated academic excellence by earning a grade point average of four-point-oh or above and maintain an average daily attendance of ninety-five percent or better. I saw the Facebook pictures, and it looked like it was a lot of students, and I'm so excited for us to be able to do this in our district. But if you know me, my next question is what? Are we doing it everywhere else in the district? I would love to see that at each of our high schools, that we celebrate all of our scholars in that same form, so. Last thing, the IB representative will be visiting McClure North staff and cabinet members on April twelfth to discuss the requirements. And all elementary and middle school students took a math practice assessment. The data's being used to drive whole and small group instruction in a strategic effort to prepare, to better prepare our students for the math grade level assessment. And testing begins... April thirtieth. So we really need to make sure that we are ready. And last but not least, earlier this month, juniors in all of our high schools received the opportunity to take the ACT test, which is truly amazing, because we paid for that this year as a district when it used to be free. So, good job.
Thank you very much. So I want to publicly acknowledge everybody that was involved in the town hall meeting that we had on Monday for the restructuring, instead of my remarks, that this has been a long process, and I think they did a bang-up job. It was great. The feedback I've been hearing has been very positive. They're encouraging people to go, so if you did not have the opportunity to go to it, please go to one of the meetings. Please bring a friend, two or three. There are some wonderful options, I'm not going to talk about them, because I want, if you don't know what they are, I want you to go to the meeting, but option three has become known as the gasp heard across the district. So, it was. But hats off, and, you know, we look forward to continuing moving in the right direction for the school district. Is anybody here from Airport Elementary? I had the pleasure of doing muffins with mom, and that school has done a great job of bringing families in for their events. It was a packed lunchroom for that, and I also did donors to dad earlier, so, but hats off to Airport Elementary. You guys have really done a great job reaching out into the community, bringing the parents and grandparents and the guardians and everybody that's involved, so, wonderful job, so. I believe that's all I have, because I'm sure you're going to buy a couple of the other stuff. Oh, yeah, Lori, FFPD.
Thank you, good evening, board. Will you guys ask that we start doing this again, that the FFPD president come up and address the board? I promise you that I'm always trying to find something positive to share, and, you know, honestly, in April, folks are tired, things are, you know, things are a nice day, first one in a long time. I was struggling to really find a unique something to celebrate that I could start with, and I just had the opportunity this afternoon to go into some classrooms and work with some kids, and, you know what, and realized, how, why am I struggling to find something positive even amongst, as you know, this time of year, lots of people bring lots of concerns forward, but teachers are still in there doing it every day, kids are learning, staff are working so hard, our grounds look great, and everybody's doing, is chugging right along, so there is something to celebrate. Things are going well, and I appreciate that. I do want to bring my concern forward, though, as I always do, and just let you know that there is a lot of... know that there's a lot of things that haven't been decided, even for the upcoming school year, that is, are making some folks apprehensive, particularly as contracts get ready to come out, such as, uh, Sputnik Times, I know there's going to be some work there, and I know there's some staffing that is still kind of up in the air. So if we can, the more information we can get to folks as they make decisions about, for their future, the better for them. So, just wanted to put that, put that out there. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes. So, good evening, everybody. Uh, just a few things here to update, uh, folks about. I do want to, um, wish Mr. Eba happy birthday, so let's give him a round of applause. Happy birthday, Mr. Eba. Happy birthday. Awesome. Um, I do want to take this opportunity to, um, to ask you to join me in a moment of silence for, we had a student at Warner Grove who was tragically killed, um, here recently, Iliana Novoa. Uh, she was a kindergartner, um, so if you listen to the news and, and so you know about that, I won't go into the details, but, um, our hearts just go out to her family, uh, for that tragic loss. Uh, so if you would just join me for a moment of silence on her behalf and her mom. Uh, we have quite a few things going on. First, I'll just touch on the restructuring, um, meeting that we had on Monday night. Um, and, you know, we, so we're always thinking about, um, because there, as Lori said, a lot of great things, uh, going on. Um, there's always room for improvement, and I, like her, and many of you, uh, board members in particular, um, often hear, uh, the things that aren't working well. Um, and I need to hear that because that's how you improve. Um, and I'm one of the first ones, even looking at myself in the mirror, to say, what can I do better to make us better? And so that is always going to be my focus. Uh, but I, but I, I want to make sure that we don't lose the power of great teaching that's going on in our classrooms, uh, leaders who are working hard to support the work that teachers are doing. Uh, we have some of the most amazing teachers, uh, I believe, on this planet. And I don't think we are, you know, enough to give them the credit that they deserve. So, I'd just like to ask any teachers that are with us right now, just stand for a moment, let us, uh, celebrate you again, all of our teachers that are here. Thank you, thank you for what you do, for my son and all the other sons and daughters that are in our school district, because it is you who make the difference. And I'll say anybody, uh, we have two kinds of people who work in this district, uh, teachers and those who support teachers. Uh, and so that is so important. Everybody is important, but I want to make sure we continue to push and support, um, student outcomes. Um, so these restructuring meetings, uh, I've heard some pretty good comments, and I've heard some concerns as well. Um, and, uh, I strongly encourage you, um, I had a student who reached out to me today in fact, he said, what is this about, uh, the district and what's going on? And I said, well, you know, we're going to have a, it was an MSB student in fact. And I said, well, we're actually going to be in your school on Monday night, uh, at 6:30, uh, in the auditorium. And I really encourage you to have your peers, because I recently met with every high school student, my every high school student, every high school with some students when we had the walkout back in, uh, March. And so I said, well, please invite every one of the students who were there and other, the other friends, their peers, to come Monday night, because we will be there again and talking specifically about, uh, what these options are, um, and, uh, what, uh, you know, what you need to be involved in, having conversations about it. He certainly gave me his opinion. Um, I said, but no decision has been made yet, the board, uh, hasn't made any decisions. We're collecting data, getting feedback, um, and doing everything we can to make sure that we hear people's voices. So please help us. Um, I said, you know, you may not agree with what's happening, but it, I don't want anybody to say they didn't know. Uh, and so we're doing everything we can to, to continue getting the word out, uh, to everybody. So please help us with that, we, we really appreciate it. Um, so the next one is this Monday at MSB, um, at 6:30. And then, um, the third one, not final, but third one is at North, and that's going to be the following Monday on the 23rd at 6:30 as well. So we will have, uh, you know, three by the end of this month, and we, we are working on, working with the Florson Library as well as the Ferguson Library, uh, to have some, uh, community, small community, uh, sort of intimate conversations about the restructuring efforts, um, as well as other places in the community. A couple of folks, uh, have said they would, uh, invite those who are in their neighborhoods to some community talks at houses. And I would love to do, I've done that before, I'd love to continue doing that. So, uh, I opened that up, if someone would like to, uh, to invite me in for coffee, and I'd love to, to talk more about it. Um, we will have next, um, week, uh, the 24th of April, uh, an induction ceremony for, um, about 21 young men who have been identified at each of the high schools. Now, this will spread, we've been doing mentoring for the last couple of years, uh, but we're at a place now where, uh, we'll have a formal program, we're starting at the high schools, uh, and training our high school young men to, uh, be prepared, uh, thinking about scholarships and manhood and all those kinds of things. Uh, we'll meet with them on a regular basis. I mentioned that once before, and Gary and his team have presented it before the board. And so we'll start a, a formal induction ceremony, we'll have a formal, formal one, um, on the 24th, um, at the STEAM School, and we'll be preparing those young men to support their peers in their schools, but also for the theater schools, the middle and high, uh, elementary schools that feed into those high schools. And what we hope we'll do is expand that so that next year we can, um, start it with our young ladies, uh, my sister's keeper. Uh, but I think it's really important to use the resources we have in our own district to support each other. Um, and so we're really looking forward to, uh, we, many of these young men have already begun doing this work, and we want to make it formal. Brandon and, uh, um, Anya and, uh, Charlene and Kevin have been doing an amazing job in supporting, uh, building, um, cards and different structures to help get the word out. Uh, so please, if you're available on the 24th of this month, uh, come over to the STEAM School, um, and we'll have our induction ceremony there. Um, testing does begin on April 30th. Uh, I personally met with, um, you know, every principal, talking specifically about data, uh, talking specifically about APR, specifically about, um, benchmarks, uh, looking at where we were last year based on the math exam, uh, what kind of goals have been set at each school, um, and what kind of progress is being made throughout the year. And so I personally met, uh, along with their supervisors, every principal talking about that data. Um, I can't stress enough how important it is, uh, to improve our data, to improve our scores, but to more, more than anything, improve learning. Uh, that, that's the key, is outcomes. Um, and I think the community always certainly looks at, uh, the APR score, and I want to keep focusing on that and also what goes into it. Uh, nothing's more important than improving learning for children, reading and, and math in particular, but in all areas. So we're going to keep focusing there. I just ask you if you have a student or have a, a neighbor or someone who's in school, uh, what is really important is that, um, however you feel about testing, we have it. Uh, and we have to do it. But I encourage you to encourage your, your children or your community to, when, when students sit for tests, to take them very seriously. Uh, to really stay focused and take tests very seriously. This is, this is not a game, and, uh, I want to make sure that our community, uh, is behind them. It's stressful for many students already, and so I just want to make sure that we create the kind of environment where testing isn't one where it stresses them out any more than it already does. Uh, so please encourage your, your children and people in your community, uh, to take this very, very seriously. Uh, and then I'll say finally, uh, a couple of, um, you know, things that come to me from different schools. Um, I just want to say a word really quickly about staffing. Um, I said this at the forum the other night, and let me say it in here really clearly so that everybody's on the same page. Um, because I've gotten some concerns from teachers, and I, and I'm glad they feel comfortable coming to me and, and asking me these things. Uh, so there are no cuts, uh, at all. Uh, what we have been doing, I personally, Laura as well as HR, uh, and finance altogether have met with every principal. Any principal who's here right now could have tested it, I've met with every principal. Uh, we've looked at that staffing, uh, we've looked at, uh, student enrollment, uh, we've looked at every area to begin making more sound, fiscally sound decisions about, uh, how we appropriate staff. Uh, what I can tell you that especially at the secondary level, we cannot afford to have classes that are eight students, uh, strong. That, that, that's, that's not prudent. Uh, especially when we have kindergarten classes and first grade classes that, and some places are busting at the seams. And, and what I have to do, and those are the decisions that I have to make and make recommendations to the board, and there's sometimes I have to make these decisions that, you know, uh, I want to make sure that, I would love for every teacher to have, you know, 20 or 15 students, but it's just not doable. Uh, and so we have to make some decisions about staffing at every level, which could mean that we have to reappropriate some staff. Um, and I don't have any person in mind, I'm thinking about the whole picture, the aggregate. And so that means that I can tell you that I will center focus on our K-2 classrooms, because what we do know about research is that where it matters most, smaller class sizes, is in those grades. The research batches up time again, especially for kids who come from homes that haven't had early ed. Race that matter. If they haven't had early ed, uh, before they come to kindergarten, then smaller class sizes matter for those students. So, we, we have been and will be putting our emphasis on making sure that our K-2 classes have that kind of support they need. So what does that mean? Because if we do that, the resources have to come from somewhere. Uh, and so what we have to do is look at the whole picture, um, and make some decisions based on where those priorities are. Doesn't mean that the secondary schools aren't, are important, but we have to make sure we appropriate our resources so that we balance it out. Uh, the other piece is, uh, you know, I often sometimes hear, especially in the elementary schools, the need for additional support around reading. Um, and I would love to have a reading specialist, two or three for every school, and, and having three or four people doing LLI, and they're really grabbing those kids who are falling in the gaps. Well, guess what? They got to be paid. And, you know, the money's got to come from somewhere. Uh, so, you know, again, nobody's being cut, but we're just looking at the resources overall, and we're going to make decisions and make recommendations to the board, uh, that we feel is best for the entire district. And sometimes that impacts people who've been in the place for a while. Um, and I'm sorry about that. Uh, but what I can tell you is that I'll make a recommendation based on what I think is best for the district. Uh, it may not be popular, but I can tell you that I'm not thinking about any person in particular in terms of trying to move somebody because of some other motive. My motive is spreading our resources well, uh, so that we get the most out of educating every child well. Um, and so I just wanted to say that publicly so that everybody's on the same page. Um, there are no budget cuts, there is no ripping, uh, we're just maximizing the use of our resources. And that's, you know, at the other end, if we do it well, it's going to be beneficial for everybody. Uh, where, where their resources, we're not going to hold them, we're going to put them in classrooms, uh, to make sure that, uh, at secondary level as well, uh, so that we can support. In fact, I'll just say this and I'll stop. Um, we made the decision from a federal perspective to, uh, extend the federal dollars to the secondary schools. So that, so that, uh, middle and high schools other than North got this, in December and January, got additional dollars. Um, and we put dollars in those secondary schools, uh, to give them support. They know it, that's one of the reasons, uh, we were able to bring the ABIT program forward and other programs, um, that, uh, the high schools are, are being able to offer. And, and so when we want those programs, they cost. And so the money's got to come from somewhere. Uh, and, and Laura can tell you, this is as good as anybody, because she knows the dollars well, that we're being as prudent, uh, nobody's wasting anything, uh, every dime we spend, we can account for to you, because we, if you ask the question, we can account to you for why and how we're using it. Uh, but I can tell you that every dollar, every penny is, uh, focused on classrooms and what's going on there. Um, so, that's my service for the night. Thank you very much.
The board allocates this portion of the meeting to allow stakeholders the opportunity to comment on both agenda items and non-agenda items at the start of each board meeting. Prior to, prior to the public comment period, participants are asked to fill out a comment card with their name, address, phone number, email address, and topic to be addressed. And will be allowed up to 30 minutes to speak. Members of the audience who wish to speak to the board are requested to speak from the podium, identify themselves, and keep them with District Policies 4054, 4059, and personnel law should refrain from making negative comments that are personally identifiable. While the board will not directly respond to speakers during the comment period, the board may make clarifying remarks, or the board president may make clarifying remarks at the end of the comment session to correct any of the statement of fact, so. Right now we have two. So, uh, Ms. Gallagher wants to talk about the survey, changing school start times.
I'm first. I try my major practice not to publicly speak because I'll put my foot in my mouth. So, um, I got this survey today, um, Maria Gallagher, sorry, I've been a resident here for 30 years. My kids went all through Ferguson-Floreson, very happy with it, but things have changed. Um, and I'm, I'm really unhappy with this survey with changing the start time, because I think you are, if you push back start time, I think it's really going to hurt those parents that have, I've driven all my life with my kids to get them there on time, good attendance. And if I have to go to work after nine, I don't get a full workday in. And I think childcare is going to be a problem. I think people are going to have to start paying for childcare, which is going to put them in a crunch. And, um, I just, I'm really unhappy with that. I'm, I'm unhappy with, you know, what, how we're using, you know, some of those funds right now. Right now we have a probe student that doesn't even show up on time, but she still gets to go to a probe. You know, how come you're going to penalize us, parents, that do get our kids on time? Make us change our schedules? And, but you're catering to the ones who can't get their kids there on time. They can get their kids there on time, they're just not making that effort. That's how I feel. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Carolyn Randazzo wants to address the board regarding student safety.
Thank you and good evening, I'm Carolyn Randazzo, and I, first I want to say, uh, Dr. Davis, as a former second grade teacher, thank you for keep working to get those classes smaller, that's so important. And it's good to hear from Dr. Thurman of, and I know Mr. Beals has, uh, an effect on that too, about the reduction in, in suspensions and referrals, that's music to my ears. And so like it says on the card, I want to talk about student safety, a very important topic that all of us are concerned about. Recently, um, a brief was released, actually re-released, that was written by four different groups, and this is a very well researched brief, it's 19 pages long. And the groups involved are the Advancement Project, the Alliance for Educational Justice, Dignity in Schools Campaign, and the NAACP Legal Defense and Educational Fund Incorporated. And they re-released it last month, because they originally released it in March 2018 after students and teachers were killed at Sandy Hook Elementary School. And it addresses some of the remedies that were proposed at that time, that they, the research shows are not effective. They re-released it last month in light of what happened in Florida at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School. So, I'm bringing this to you to strongly encourage you to read this brief seriously, take it into account as you were making policies and decisions about our schools. And so I'd just like to give it to you now and for your reading pleasure and for your information. Thank you.
Thank you, Thurman.
You're welcome. You're welcome. And if anyone else would like a copy, I'll be glad to send it to you electronically or you can give me your email address. Thank you.
All right, um, Dr. Thurman, would you please read the dispersments for the district?
Yes. Payroll, teacher and non-teacher, 12 million, 91,020 and 91 cents. Operational dispersments, 1,606,860 dollars and 73 cents. With a total of 13 million, 697,881 dollars and 64 cents.
Now the motion to accept the consent agenda?
So many.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Motion passed? All right, so this takes us down to our, pretty much our lone, um, agenda item, but one that I think everybody, well, I know, everybody on the board is pretty excited about, something that we've been working on for, for many, many months. Uh, so, Mr. Hampton?
Good evening, board. Good evening, guests this evening, colleagues. Board of Education has developed an equity resolution during its retreat last year. This resolution represents not only the board's commitment to equity, but also its commitment that equity be a primary lens to view the district's work and a driving force Administration recommends the board adopt the equity resolution as follows. A resolution to adopt equity is the guiding principle in the Ferguson, Florissant School District. Whereas the Ferguson, Florissant School District Board of Education is committed to the success of every student in each of our schools and to achieving our mission of ensuring that all students graduate ready for college, career, and life. Whereas we believe the responsibility for student success is shared broadly by district staff, administrators, instructors, communities, and families. Whereas we believe that it is the right of every student to have an equitable educational experience within the Ferguson, Florissant School District consistent with state and federal law. Whereas the concept of educational equity goes beyond formal equality where all students are treated the same, providing a barrier-free environment where all students, regardless of their race, social class, geographic location, or other personal characteristics such as creed, color, religion, ancestry, national origin, age, economic status, gender, sexual orientation, including gender expression or identity, pregnancy status, marital status, physical appearance, presence of any sensory, mental, or physical disability, or the use of a trained dog, guide, or service animal by a person with a disability, have the opportunity to benefit equally. Now therefore be it resolved, the Ferguson, Florissant School District is focused on closing the opportunity gap and creating learning communities that provide support and academic enrichment programs for all students. Administration recommends the board adopt this equity resolution.
I need a motion to adopt the equity resolution?
I would adopt the equity resolution.
We have like three people? Okay, we'll give it to Dr. Graves and Dr. Thurman. Discusses, please. Hearing none? All right. All in favor of adopting the equity resolution, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none? Motion passed. Thank you very much.
So, Board, we have a framed copy of this that we'd like to have you all come out in front and we can take a picture to commemorate this commitment.
Yes. [applause]
Let's let Dr. Davis.
He has to get in every picture.
Get next to the frame.
Can I have your whole tape?
Sure. You have my hair.
[laughter]
Seven.
Second. Do you think we can roll?